All right, we're live. I now call the order, the January 9th, 2019 Public Hearing to Consider Legislative Amendment to Section 703 of the Clackamas County Zoning and Development Ordinance. Before we begin, I invite you to rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to note that Commissioner Schrader is President of AOC, Association of Oregon Counties, is at a meeting, and Commissioner Humbertson is in the building at another meeting, will be here shortly. Before we begin, oh, I already did that. Today, we will consider ZDO 275, which is a legislative text amendment to the Clackamas County Zoning and Development Ordinance that will adopt a new floodplain map for the Sandy River Basin, produced by the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA, and amends the standards that apply to new development in the 100-year floodplain countywide. The hearing on ZDO 275 will proceed as following. We'll first hear a presentation from Senior Planner Melissa Ehrens. Next, I'll open up the hearing for public testimony, banning of public officials who will have five minutes each. Well, since we have done that, ought to be a short one. Then representatives from community organizations, recognized community organizations, will have three minutes each. And finally, others wishing to testify will have three minutes each, which we may expand, because there doesn't seem to be a huge crowd. The Board will then deliberate and either render a decision today or set the time to make a decision at a later date. Assisting us on the hearing today is our clerk, Kevin Moss, Planning Manager Jennifer Hughes, and Senior Planner Steve Hensaka. Wow. Good enough. From our Planning and Zoning Division, and Assistant County Counsel Nate Boderman. If you wish to testify, please fill out the green card and give it to Kevin over here. If you have prepared a written statement, please give a copy to Kevin and use your time to summarize what you have written. Everyone who wishes to speak will have an opportunity to do so. So with that, we'll hear from our planner, Melissa. Just like to note that our missing commissioner, one of them, has just arrived. Ken?
My apologies, Mr. Chairman. I was at a public meeting, and I took a few minutes to get away.
Thanks.
Legislative text amendment, ZDO 275, involves map and text amendments to the floodplain management district in the county.
Have you guys seen this picture, by the way, where the road is wiped out?
As required by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, county planning staff are recommending two categories of amendments to zoning and development ordinance, Section 703, the floodplain management district. First, the adoption of updated floodplain maps for the Sandy River Basin, and second, floodplain ordinance text amendments that would apply to the floodplain countywide. Here's an overview of the new Sandy River Basin floodplain mapping prepared by FEMA. Only the floodplain for the Sandy River, Salmon River, Zigzag River, and their streams, creeks, and tributaries would be modified as part of the proposed update. Clackamas County Zoning and Development Ordinance, Section 703, regulates development in the floodplain and is modeled after FEMA's federal regulations for floodplain management. The floodplain ordinance includes siting and design standards for floodplain development in order to ensure public health and safety for county residents. In order to remain participants in FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program, or NFIP, the county is required to periodically update the floodplain ordinance and associated maps. Participation in the NFIP allows property owners in the county's floodplain to receive federally backed and discounted flood insurance. The use of LiDAR, a type of laser mapping technology, enabled FEMA to more accurately represent on-ground topographical conditions in the new flood maps. The NFIP is an optional program for local governments nationwide. However, participation in this program ensures that county floodplain residents will receive flood insurance. Additionally, it ensures that federal disaster assistance will become available in the event of an emergency in the county. Local government participants in the NFIP are also eligible to receive federal grants and loans. For example, the county's disaster management department has received such federal grants and loans in order to buy out flood damaged properties and to retrofit and elevate flood damaged structures. Local governments are only required to meet the minimum FEMA federal regulations to participate in the NFIP. Clackamas County has been participating in the NFIP since 1978. Continued participation in the NFIP ensures that over 6,000 property owners within the county's floodplain continue to receive discounted flood insurance rates. The consequences of suspension from the NFIP would include losing access to FEMA flood insurance, federal disaster assistance, and federal loans or grants. Specifically, since it is a federal requirement to purchase flood insurance for any federally backed mortgage financing structure located in the floodplain, this would adversely impact county residents trying to buy or sell property in the floodplain. While there is a growing private flood insurance market, it is often very expensive and not offered in high-risk zones such as the floodway. FEMA staff have communicated that failure to adopt the updated floodplain maps for the Sandy River Basin and floodplain ordinance text amendments will result in the county's suspension from the NFIP. The floodplain ordinance mapping updates were initiated by the states of Oregon and Washington, who identified the Lower Columbia watershed as a priority for FEMA's mapping updates. As part of this request, the Sandy River Basin floodplain was remapped and new preliminary flood rate insurance maps were prepared. Following the project initiation in 2012, FEMA has been conducting public outreach to address community and property owner concerns. Specifically, there have been two public workshop meetings, an opportunity for public appeal and comment, and a subsequent resilience workshop. This process was part of FEMA's risk mapping, assessment, and planning program, which is a nationwide effort to provide high-quality flood maps and information, tools to better assess the risks from flooding, and planning and outreach support to communities to help them take action to reduce or mitigate flood risk. The floodplain will be changing for the Sandy, Salmon, and Zigzag Rivers, as well as Henry Creek, Cedar Creek, Clear Creek, Still Creek, and Tickle Creek. The updated floodplain may not change on every property in the Sandy River Basin. However, many properties could see the mapped floodplain reduced or expanded on their property. Other properties could be entirely removed or added to the floodplain. FEMA has been conducting outreach to residents in the Sandy River Basin since 2012 to give the public an opportunity to express any property-specific concerns. Additionally, county staff have been available to go over the new floodplain maps with any residents who have called, emailed, or come into the county in person. To address any residents' economic concerns over new flood insurance requirements, FEMA has explained that properties being added into the floodplain can receive lower insurance rates for two years to buffer the economic impact to the property owner. If the county adopts the new firms and ZDO 703 text amendments, the county will remain in the NFIP, and federally backed flood insurance coverage will continue to be available for existing development and new construction. FEMA, in conjunction with the Department of Land Conservation and Development's floodplain coordinator, have reviewed the county's adopted floodplain ordinance and identified the following changes as required for continued participation in the NFIP. Definition modifications to incorporate the exact language of FEMA's NFIP regulations. Removal of the Fish Enhancement Project exemption from Section 703.07, Development in the Floodway. Updates to the construction requirements of manufactured dwellings as requested by county building codes and required by FEMA. Clarification that determination of an exempt use requires review as a Type 1 land use application. And updates to standards for wet floodproofing certain non-residential structures. Addition of regulations requiring specific standards for siting and design of critical facilities, which includes schools, nursing homes, hospitals, police, fire, and emergency response installations, is an optional addition. FEMA is strongly suggesting adoption of the following regulation. However, we are identifying it as an optional for NFIP participation. On December 10th, 2018, a hearing for ZDO 275 was held before the Clackamas County Planning Commission, where staff recommended approval of ZDO 275 as proposed. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of ZDO 275. At the Planning Commission meeting for the subject ZDO amendment, public comment and Planning Commissioner discussion centered around two main topics. The first was the development of Sandy River Channel Migration Zone, or CMZ. The CMZ project is being managed by multiple parties, including the Oregon Department of Mineral Industries, or DOGAMI, PSU-based Oregon Solutions, and the Army Corps of Engineers. At this time, the CMZ effort remains ongoing and is not a component of the comprehensive plan or the ZDO. Secondly, concerns were raised in public testimony and comment at the Planning Commission hearing regarding habitat and water quality protection in the floodplain. To address these comments, planning staff explained that floodplain permitting usually occurs in conjunction with other environmental land use approvals as required by other sections of the county's zoning and development ordinance. Other state and federal environmental permits also address environmental protections in the floodplain. That said, the county is also working on improving environmental conditions through other ongoing and contemplated efforts, such as the Performance Clackamas Strategic Goal for Surface Water to enhance water quality countywide. In conclusion, ZDO 275 is specifically focused on improving consistency with the NFIP, as required by FEMA, to manage risk for floodplain development and safeguard public health and safety for county residents. Thank you, that concludes my presentation.
Any questions?
Ms. Chairman, I have quite a few, but I'll defer to my colleagues until they've had their questions answered.
Any questions? Ms. Chairman?
No. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. First, in reference to your report, just some information I need to learn about, if I may. On page two of three in the materials we received, it's, one is addition of regulations requiring specific standards for siting and design of critical facilities, which includes such developments as schools, nursing homes, hospitals, and police and fire stations. It implies to me that you would actually consider locating those in a flood zone? Am I correct on that, or not?
It's possible, but it becomes much more difficult with adding this provision that FEMA is recommending. So currently, you could. There's nothing in our floodplain code that would prevent you, as long as you met the construction standards for development in the floodplain. By adding this, it raises the bar considerably. It doesn't make it impossible, but it essentially makes them have to demonstrate that there isn't another feasible alternative, and then it imposes construction standards that are at a much higher level than, say, a single-family dwelling would have to meet.
Is there a requirement of a finding that there is no other alternative?
I need to find the exact language in the amendment, so if you maybe want to move to your next question, let me search for that, and we can come back to it.
Okay, thank you. The next is, I'm just trying to understand why you would have removal of the Fish Enhancement Project exemption from the general prohibition on the development of a floodway.
Right, understandably. So we've been working a lot behind the scenes with FEMA and with DLCD about this. It's not a federal, as we understand it, it's not a federal FEMA allowance to have this type of provision, so it's inconsistent with the NFIP regulations. However...
What's the consequence of that inconsistency?
So it's a local, I guess, regional FEMA memo or policy that they allow, but it's inconsistent with nationwide FEMA policy. So it's inconsistency internally in FEMA, I guess, in how they implement their own regulations. And what we would be doing is just removing it from our actual code language. However, FEMA says it would still be allowed as an internal planning procedure, but because it's not part of FEMA's legal regulations currently, they're requesting it's deleted to ensure consistency with NFIP. If that makes sense. We were a bit confused, too, so we've been working it out with them a lot.
Yeah, that's, I mean, if they have it in their own regulations, why do they care whether we have it in our regulations?
So they don't have it, I guess, in their CFRs, their federal regulations. They just have it as an internal memo for Region 10, is it?
Yeah, Region 10, which covers our area, apparently has an internal policy that allows these projects to proceed under slightly different standards, and that can continue to be implemented, but it can't actually be in the code. I agree with you that it's very unusual to have it work that way, but that's the directive that we've gotten from FEMA.
And you have no choice but to obey that directive?
Well, that's our understanding. I mean, we haven't done legal analysis on, well, what exactly would happen? What FEMA is telling us is you must implement these things, or you will be suspended.
I'd be curious as to know what kind of construction requirements for manufactured dwellings. I mean, why would you even put a dwelling, let alone a manufactured dwelling, in a floodplain area?
So the county's floodplain ordinance does not and never has prohibited development. Development in the floodplain is permitted. Development in the floodway, which is a particular subcategory of the floodplain, is highly restricted. So you cannot, for instance, build new dwellings in the floodway. But in the 100-year floodplain, we allow development. And essentially, it's construction standards for those, so anchoring, openings in the foundation to allow floodwater to flow through, elevating. We're actually at a higher level than the minimum requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program. The minimum is that you build, you know, at or above the base flood elevation. We require two feet above for the first finished floor of the structure. So it's construction standards, but it is not a prohibition on development. If the county were to pursue that, that would be a kind of a new regulatory program.
I'm just speaking for myself, but it just strikes me as foolish to even allow it in a floodplain, frankly. It shouldn't have been done in the first place. The only thing that happens is inevitably a flood occurs, the structure's destroyed, insurance money has to be paid out, and then they get to do it again, which makes no sense to me. But if that's what we have to do, okay.
Sorry, I do have the answer on your critical facilities question, if you want to go back to that. The new language says, "Construction of new critical facilities shall be, to the extent possible, located outside the limits of the special flood hazard area. Construction of new critical facilities shall be permissible within the special flood hazard area if no feasible alternative site is available." And then it talks about the construction requirements.
Specifically, that's what I was looking for on that.
Yes.
Thank you. We received some input from a citizen. I'm not sure that the Planning Commission ever received this. It may have been too late for the Planning Commission. And I have some, do you have that document?
Is that from Mr. Tilka?
Yes, it is.
Yes. And the Planning Commission received his first submission, which he sent to you as well, but then he had a follow-up couple of pages that came just to you.
Okay. I had some questions about that. So on page three, he has what I would call a sort of conclusive paragraph at that point, in which he suggests, in reference to the material above that last paragraph on page three, "Obviously, this could become problematic with property owners, county employees, attorneys, et cetera, disagreeing on what the maps show. FEMA needs to put a giant disclaimer on these new flood maps, along with the GIS tax lot overlay, stating these maps are not accurate in determining if a tax lot is entirely within or outside of a flood hazard area." That doesn't seem to me to be unreasonable, so that if we're going to even allow this kind of construction to go on in this area, that, you know, buyer beware should not be the operant modus operandi here. It ought to be, we don't know if this is in or out, or whatever, something pretty specific, so that somebody that buys that lot to build on it knows exactly what they're getting into. That didn't seem like an unreasonable request on his part. Is that something we can incorporate?
So our code itself does have a warning and disclaimer of liability at subsection 703.03, which serves that function of alerting folks that just because it's mapped a certain way doesn't mean that we couldn't have floods that act in a different way, that flood property that's not in a designated floodplain. We're actually required to have this statement in our code as part of NFIP compliance, so that is, that does sort of function as that public notification. We, as a county, cannot add, you know, any additional sort of disclaimer statements to the federal maps, that they are what they are. I actually don't know, I'm sort of looking at Steve Henshaw, who is one of our certified floodplain managers, if there is a disclaimer statement on those maps. Is there?
There's no disclaimer.
Okay. So FEMA doesn't have anything on there. There are areas that are designated as not in a designated floodplain, I think that's Zone D, or it used to be, where it kind of says, well, just because, you know, we don't know, sort of. There are areas where they'll say you could be in a floodplain, but you're not, but there's not just sort of a general disclaimer statement beyond the code, and the code does have that.
Can we request it of FEMA?
Sure, we can request it.
I just think that alerting people to the potential risks that are involved in developing a home or anything else in that area ought to be, you know, red-letter warning in some way or another, so that there's no excuse. If you get flooded out, you knew better. And I'd like to see us try to make that happen.
Sure, we can submit a request to them.
Let's see. On page five of his presentation, you're reducing a floodway from 650 feet down to 100 feet. That, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding why we would reduce something that dramatically, knowing the history of the rivers in that area.
So I guess the first message is the county isn't, I mean, yes, as a technical matter, we're reducing it in the sense that we're adopting these maps, but these maps become effective on the 18th of January for purposes of the National Flood Insurance Program, regardless of what we do. FEMA is reducing the size of the floodway.
So we're not doing that?
We're not doing it, they're doing it, and we're complying. You know, I do not pretend to be a technical expert on how they model what the river will do, but that's what they did. They hired somebody to do the hydraulic modeling to figure out what is assumed to happen during a, you know, 100-year flood event, and this is the result. My understanding would be that the modeling they used this time is much more advanced than what was done for the maps that existed previously, using the latest technology and should be better, but that doesn't mean that they caught everything. It doesn't mean that there can't be something that happens that defies what the model shows, so it is just their best professional estimate of what's likely to happen. It does not, a couple things. Mr. Tilka did take advantage of going through FEMA's appeal process on the maps as they were initially generated.
So he has gone through that step?
He has, and he was partially successful in having some changes implemented, but not as successful as he would have hoped. And then the other point is that FEMA does not currently regulate channel migration zones, which you have had a lot of discussion about, and the Sandy River is a river that has a channel migration zone. That's not part of the National Flood Insurance Program currently. I guess it's an aspirational goal of FEMA's, is my understanding, and some states have done that. Oregon is looking to do that, at least the wheels are moving on that. We don't know where it's going to end up, but the county is a key player in that, and so ultimately, there could be a wider, you know, area of regulation around this river than these maps show, but it's just not ripe yet.
My last one, so that, because I'm sure we do need to move on, I understand. My last one is on page seven, the very last paragraph. There's a recommendation, and again, I don't know if this is something that we can do, or if this is something that FEMA would have to do. The second to the last sentence, it says, "It would be prudent to have a buffer area where floodways could be expanded if needed." Is that something that we can do?
So, maybe. It's not, I don't think you can just sort of, we would need to be specific. If we're going to go out and regulate a particular area, we have to identify what that is, we have to go through a land use planning process that meets all of our procedural requirements, that it's compliant with state law, and we have to let people know that we are considering restricting their right to do something with their property that they can do currently. And that's the case, you know, with any sort of project like, you know, like Mr. Tilka is suggesting. So could we, I don't think we could do something different for NFIP purposes, but could the county choose to have a regulatory overlay that's different than this one for purposes of restricting development? Yes, I think we could, but there are obviously some consequences to that, a lot of outreach required, you know, technical analysis to justify what we would do, and I think that's what this channel migration zone project is potentially looking at.
Okay, I'd like to get together with you at some point in the future to get more education on this one, especially that last particular one, because I just think for public safety purposes, that's something we ought to take a serious look at. I don't know if it's possible to do it or not, but I'd like to get more information and find that out.
Sure.
And I don't want to delay our hearing any further, but thank you for your responses.
You're welcome.
Paul, I just want to just say something and just share a story. I really appreciate Commissioner Humberson's interest in digging into this. And you look at the date on some of this material and some of these photos, it was 2011, and my very first meeting as a county commissioner was declaring an emergency because of this flood event, which was really an erosion event that was a flood event, but, so, hell, it was baptism by fire, to some degree, on realizing all of the complications and all the inter-agency challenges with Division of State Lands, the Forest Service, FEMA, the Corps of Engineers, the county, the state, federal stuff, DLCD, land conservation, case law of how, why these things were built in the first place. And we've, even though reasonable minds would say this should happen, you know, by case law, we were forced to do things that we initially rejected. And properties were built, investments were made, and it's not unlike anyone who watches TV and sees a hurricane in the southeast territory and sees these homes destroyed, and they go back and rebuild them in the same place and say, "Why?" And we're paying for that, right? So, you know, it's that, that type of thing. So I appreciate your interest, but after delving myself into this and realizing how complex it is, it's a shame when you have to deal with this many, these many agencies. And we are incrementally making progress, but it is painfully slow, and this is just one increment in the long story.
My focus is pretty simple. It's just, I'm, my concern more than anything else is just, is public safety on an issue such as this. And when we know that we have a situation in which the water has been there before, it's going to be there again, it's going to do what it's going to do, I, it's like allowing people to build houses on known slides. I mean, and we saw what happened less than two years ago in Washington, when several hundred people were killed and several thousand, or about 1,000 homes were destroyed on a mudslide, and they knew it was there. And when we say it's okay to build in a location that we know has flood, there's an implication of liability on us, in my opinion. So I, whatever we can do to minimize that... So I, whatever we can do to minimize that, that kind of building behavior and minimize the risk to people's safety, I'm going to, to be candid with you, I'm going to push on it. So that's kind of where I'm coming from on it. I get the idea of wanting to live by a river, I truly do, but, you know, there's just places where it's not really bright to live there.
And so you're suggesting logic?
Yes, exactly.
I can't help it.
So, I'm going to go a little more into history, land use application across the Sandy River. We denied, they took it to court.
Yeah.
We lost, they built, they washed away, or will someday. You know, I think that at some point, everyone has a responsibility if they're going to do something to look. I mean, I'm not going to buy a piece of property and hope to build a 10-story building unless I know it's possible, or it's legal, or you have the support to do that, but people do it anyway. I think I mentioned, well, you weren't in the room yesterday. Somebody's in the room with me. Yeah, it was you.
Okay, what was it?
Anyway, that, now I'm trying to remember what it was, I was so confused on who that was. Oh, yeah, I, we used to stay at a cabin on the Sandy River. That was just right on the river. And the 64 flood, it's 600 feet from the river now, and, and...
The 2024 flood, it could be under the river.
That's exactly right.
Could be next month?
Could be, yeah, today, who knows? But, I mean, you're suggesting logic, and in the same...
No, it's my weakness.
Same thing. You know, I think that people have some property rights that we also need to support. If they're stupid enough to build on the floodplain...
I pledge you so that way.
You know, they take responsibility for that.
I just want to be sure where we can...
We just have to let them know.
I just want to be sure where we can, there's plenty of warning.
We tried to get, well, a realtor would actually have to tell them. You know, I'm selling you this piece of property.
And in that business, let me just say that the dollar signs have a tendency to blind people to what they actually should be doing.
The other thing is, is that, so, some people are going to benefit from this map, and some people are going to, you know, lose value, or not be able to sell their home. I spoke to one gentleman, I believe he's sitting out here in the audience, who's been on the floodplain for a while, or they say he was, but he really wasn't. And consequently, his insurance rates have been really high, and he's gone every single process to get, to get them to change it, and we've been delaying the map for a long time, and this will help him out, but it'll hurt somebody else.
Oh, I intend to support what's been proposed by staff. That's not an issue for me, but I, some of the things that we talked about, if you can work on those, I would appreciate that, and in the future, get together to educate me some more on this. I'd appreciate that also.
You know, the Sandy River flood was interesting, when you certainly experienced that, but we had to do emergency things and got permission to do it, and then they sued us for doing it. They gave us permission, then they came after us for doing it. Logic doesn't always make sense. Anyway, so, we are to, so I'm going to, any other questions?
No, sir.
So at this point, we're going to ask if anyone in the audience would like to testify on this matter? Do we have any blue cards? So, nobody wants to testify, so I was going to open, and then I'm going to close the public hearing, and ask if, let me see.
Suggest a motion, Chair?
Yeah, I might suggest that the BCC consider a motion to adopt ZDO 275 as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve ZDO 275 as recommended by the Planning Commission and staff.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded, that we approve ZDO 275 as by the Planning Commission and staff. And one thing you noted yesterday is that we have very short timeframe here, so we're told to do this. And, and so it's important that we get this done, not that I'm worrying that it's not going to pass. Okay, any further discussion?
I just think it's a lost opportunity, if we couldn't make some amendments to just test and put our new staff or our staff in pain and suffering through a lot of amendments to the motion, so. Next time? Yeah, okay. So we'll try and do a better job next time.
Maybe next week.
Chairman?
Yes?
I just want to, it was very good work that you did. I'm not complaining about your work at all. I think you were pretty thorough in what you were doing, and I understand why we need to do this. I just want to share with you that my questions were not critical of your work, they were education for me.
Definitely understood.
Thank you.
Ongoing effort on our end, too.
So if there are no further discussions, I will call for, well, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing done, motion carries. So there are no amendments, we'll direct staff to, so it looks like we're done. So we'll close the...
Go ahead, go ahead and direct staff to draft the ordinance.
Okay.
Because we'll come back to you at a later business meeting to have you formally approve 275. And do we have a date?
We have to do it next week.
That's Thursday? Okay.
All right, so, next week.
We'll be back shortly.
So we will direct staff to draft an ordinance reflecting today's decision, included on the agenda next week for board adoption at next week's business meeting. We'll close the hearing for ZDO 275, and thank you very much.